Before we call the meeting to order, I would like to advise anybody watching us via Zoom that we are currently unable to livestream through YouTube. The livestream is again available through Zoom and the recording will be published on YouTube after this meeting. I would now like to call to order the City Council meeting. The time is now 2:01 PM. Deputy City Clerk Ty, will you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember from Eta?
Present.
Councilmember LaPlante?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Present.
Mayor Protem Alvarez?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present.
Thank you.
I will not take public comment on items listed on the special City Council meeting agenda. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience violating the city's meeting rules after fair warnings shall be removed from the council chambers. I remind the audience that pursuant to Penal Code Section 403, it is a misdemeanor for any person to willfully disturb or break up a public meeting. Those violating Penal Code Section 403 may be cited accordingly. Deputy City Clerk Ty, did we receive any written correspondence to be read into the record?
Yes, Mayor. We received one. I'll read that now. This was received from Alistair Hunter, Honorable Mayor Pacheco and City Council. As a resident of Downey for 50 years, I am urging the City Council to take a bold move for the future of the city and include in the 2022-2023 budget a line item for arts, culture, and history. Downey has fallen behind other cities in LA County who recognize the importance of arts, culture, and history and that it needs to be woven in the very fabric of the city. Arts, culture, and history plays an important role in each of the city's goals: quality of life, public engagement, economic vibrancy, efficiency and adaptability, fiscal responsibility. Sincerely, Alistair Hunter, Downey Arts Coalition, Leadership. That concludes the written public comment.
Thank you. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding items listed on the special City Council meeting agenda may now come forward and form a line. Each speaker will have four minutes to address the City Council.
Good afternoon. Expenditures, revenue, it takes a lot to run a city like Downey. Looking through the budget proposals, there's a lot of stuff you've got to deal with. There's no doubt about that. However, you bring in a lot of money too, and everybody wants to get their hands on that money. One way, shape, or form, they all want a piece of that pie. Unfortunately, some are unessential and some are essential. I think our city manager and previous councils have done a pretty good job of keeping our city in order and under budget in many cases, but they've always presented a balanced budget. However, there's movements around to increase hotel taxes, even to pay $125,000 to a firm to put the hotel tax on the ballot to raise taxes on the residents of this city and their relatives and their friends who might want to utilize the hotels in the city of Downey. Everybody wants the residents' money. They want them to pay for it. However, there needs to be some curtailing of the activities that go on in this town. We know what essential services are. We're seeing them out in our streets, putting in the new sidewalks. Still got to get to the street part of it, but just give them a little time. It doesn't just happen overnight, folks. However, we're spending a lot of money in these areas. But yet, in some cases, like the letter that was brought here, these are nonessential activities that the residents do not need to fund. The Downey Arts Coalition can get their funding privately. Same with Stay Gallery. You might even want to look at doing something with the Downey Theater. They can do things privately. Maybe we don't need to own the Downey Theater. I don't know. Something to think about. But however, we would like to see a reduction in the spending, although the proposals for expenditures and revenue kept barely a little bit of a surplus there. So that's a good thing. My hat's off to you. You've done a good job with that, and we appreciate it. However, we don't need to be spending money on private parties for ethnic groups of any kind. We don't need to be subsidizing the Stay Gallery. We don't need to be subsidizing the Downey Arts Coalition or any of these groups. We just want to see it cut back and be more frugal. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, is there a motion to close public comments? Is there a second? It's ordered by the mayor. Now, the item on our agenda, presentation and discussion of fiscal year 2022, 2023 proposed city budget. City Manager Levas, do we have somebody providing a report?
Madam Mayor, the outline for this afternoon will be that Mr. Gandhi will give you a budget presentation. Each department head will give you a presentation of their particular operations, and the council will have the opportunity to ask any questions as they see fit. I'm actually proud to present this particular budget. This is actually my 10th year in my last budget that I will be presenting to the City Council, and it's my 10th consecutive balanced budget presented to the City Council at $249 We've always been cognizant of the services that we provide to the city and to the community, and we do it in the most efficient manner possible. In terms of our labor costs compared to the 10 cities that are in our survey group, we are amongst the lowest in per capita employees of any of those groups. So we're always mindful of making sure that we have enough staff to do and deliver great service, but making sure that our bureaucracy isn't bloated as well. But we've also funded a number of things that are important to the city, and we'll continue to do that. I don't want to steal Mr. Gandhi's thunder here, but there are some things that should be highlighted, and some of those are, again, road improvements. We're spending roughly $35 million in road improvements between last year and this year, and we'll continue to do that. And those are all on residential streets, by the way. Over the last three years, that's over $100 million of infrastructure improvements that goes to police and fire and parks, things of that nature. Two-thirds of your budget is public safety, and it's reflected in the budget. That is a priority that the council has set is important, and that's the priority that the community has indicated that is important as well. So the budget reflects that. As you recall, we all got together back in February, February 10 to be specific, and we set out goals for the budget. Your goals and priorities are articulated in this document. I then meet with each of the department heads and make sure that their goals and their priorities, as well as the city manager's goals and priorities, are also articulated in this document. There's a lot going on. Obviously, we don't start at $249 million. We start at some number, and we cut and cut and cut and get to a point to make sure that we give you and deliver a balanced budget that is reflective of the needs and the goals and priorities of the City Council as you are the elected representatives of the city. And so, that said, I want to go ahead and kick this off to Mr. Gandhi. He will go ahead and present the budget. But again, at this moment in time, it is a balanced budget that is being presented to you. Mr. Gandhi.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, City Council Mayor and City Council members, and I'll start my presentation. Okay. We'll start with the executive summary, which is on this screen. Okay, both screens over here. Our beginning fund balance reserve is $32 million. We're adding a revenue of $103 million and taking out the expenditures of $103 million, leaving a surplus of $319,000. There is a request from the Police Department, from Chief Murray, that we need to add two positions, one for the police officer and one for safety dispatcher, which is about $300,000, leaving you a surplus of $19,000, and ending the fund balance with $32 million. You wouldn't remember, but last year, we were ending fund balance, we had about $27 million. We are back to $32 million, which is our policy requirement. About 35% of should be in reserves, and we are back at where we started a couple of years back. So in totality, everything looks good. I'll continue with my presentation. Go to the next slide. So I'll start. The revenue, $103 million, I can't read it there, so I'll read from here. Property tax is $32 million, increase of $1,002,930.
Mr. Gandhi, before you go on, we sort of sometimes cavalierly go over these numbers and property tax and sales tax. But if you, you know, in sales tax, we're actually, you know, pretty close to even in terms of those two revenue sources. That wasn't always the case. We ended up going on a huge economic development boom over the last four or five years and really, you know, planned for that and made sure that we made ourselves a business-friendly city, and we actually went out and made sure that we grew our local economy, not just providing service wage jobs, but also high-end jobs, you know, in the medical field. We have a medical overlay zone. But I say all that because our sales tax has really done really, really well over the last several years, and that sales tax is what provides two-thirds of your budget that goes to public safety, which is really, really huge, and to all the other services. So had we not done, undertaken a huge, robust economic development program, you would not have the sales tax numbers that you have today. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my line number two, but I was still in line number one. So going to line number one. Property tax, increase of $1.2 million from the prior. Yeah, this is pretty much set rates by the county. We get up 2%. I mean, we get 1% of the assessed value every year, up to 2%. That's what it is. Property tax, our assessed value for the city is about $14.5 billion. Last year, it was $14 billion, increase of about $500 million. To give you some perspective of the Downey's real estate, Bell Garden is $2 billion, Norwok is 8.8, Sarito is 10. So comparing neighboring cities in picture, you know, Downey is doing pretty good real estate-wise because it's very logistically located. Now, going back to the sales tax, line number two, we show an increase of $4 million for the next year. Really, sales tax really has picked up this year and current year, and it will continue for the next year, too. It's just amazing how the sales tax is doing. Our three major sales tax sources for the city is auto, which is 21%. Online sales is 18%, and restaurant is 16%. I'll talk about online sales in the next slide. Can you go to the next slide, please? Or does one after? Or one after? Or one after? Maybe it's not there. There was a graph there. Do we have in this?
For the sales tax, that's a little.
Okay, after this, one more. Okay, thank you, Borja. My bad.
You found it, Gandhi.
No, my bad. You see that the top line is brick and mortar, and the line below is the online sales. If you look at from left to right, the increase in the sales tax. A little bit of noise. Okay, thank you. Online sales has increased 500% from 2002. Right now, if you see the graph below and then the way it's going up, especially during the pandemic, and that's what kept us alive during the pandemic, is the online sales. That's not here. I mean, countywide or the statewide, for that matter. This is a statewide graph. The online sales has really picked up, really picked up, and that's what has kept us in the business, or the state of California in the business, going back. This is the one you gave. Can you read for me from there? Go back to the slide number two or three, where I was before. Yeah, okay. So sales tax is going from $31 million that we had. At my age, I can't read the screen anymore. From $30 million to $34 million, increase of $4 million. And the budgeted for the '21-'22 is $30 million, but this year, in the current year that we are, this is the budgeted number, but the actual number is significantly higher for the current year, too. The next line is utility user tax. We are showing an increase of $800,000, and that's because of the electric and gas that has really kicked up. Telephone is down on the UUT. The telephone is down, I mean, because of the landline going out of business and all the deals people are getting to the cell phones. So that's always a losing proposition for the telephone and the utility user tax, but I was pleasantly surprised for the electric and the gas. Franchise fee stays the same, is the trash fee and the cable franchise. That pretty much makes up. JPC's ambulance pretty much remains the same. What makes up that is about $3 million in the ambulance billing that we do every year, and a million is for our contract services with the City of Compton and City of Santa Feix Springs. City of Compton is about $775,000, and Santa Fe Springs is about $200,000. So we get a million from the two neighboring cities and $3 million on the ambulance billing. Other. There is a detailed listing of other under the revenue tab, the last page under the revenue tab is the other. Couple of things in the other is that that was not last year. I mean, is the new hotel coming on the Firestone, the Marriott Springfield Swiss? I'm adding a half a million dollars for that, for the increased TOT. Recreation revenue is another half a million, because this year, we are going to go full force with the recreation classes and everything. That will bring in another $500,000. There are some hidden myths, but this pretty much is the other. Charges to other funds. This is when we charge other funds for our services. I mean, water fund is pretty much the big one in there. I had written down somewhere. And it's going down because we are going to charge Prop A and CDBG. They are requiring us to do the cost allocation report. Once that's done, we'll get back into the business. That's what the difference is. And transfer from other funds, 3.7, increase of $500,000. That's because of some of the street improvements that we, that's done by general fund is reimbursed by gas tax. So the gas tax charge to the general, revenue coming in from the gas tax is much higher this year, but so that's what makes up. And the transfers from restricted general fund, $1,003,000. This is for the general fund update that's been budgeted on the expenditure side, and we resolve some general plan revenue to do the general fund plan update, and this is coming from the restricted revenue. That makes up the 1.3 million. So this is pretty much the revenue snapshot that, from the bird's eye view. We are seeing an increase of $8 million in the revenue, 8.5. Any questions on the revenue?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have a question, Anil. I do have a comment, and I want to express my profound gratitude to you and to our City Manager Gil for giving us this balanced budget, the 10th, for the 10th time, in the face of monumental challenges and the uncertainty of this COVID-19 pandemic that we've had to navigate through. I think this budget and what you've just presented in terms of the revenue, once again, is a reflection of this council and our superior commitment to our community residents regarding public safety. And I think that is remarkable, as Gil indicated at the start of the meeting, the fact that many cities around us continue to struggle and have struggled as Downey moves forward. And again, I'm, you know, I say it with hope and some trepidation, where we will be at the same time next year, but the fact that we are able to come together and see this balanced budget is really a great feat. So thank you.
So just to go back in the memory, when you say about COVID-19, if you go to March 20, at that time, we were putting the budget together for the following year, upcoming year. At that time, we had expected, we had estimated loss of revenue by $12 million, and the major portion of those was in sales tax. We came out unscathed. I mean, the whole period, we have not really tamped down into any of the reserves to balance the budget, and it was some critical time that we went through. And for the finance guy, it was the liquidity that, you know, am I going to get enough cash to pay the bills? And how much money that I need to pull out of the investments to make sure that I have enough cash to make the payrolls and accounts payable runs that nobody notices, but that's what keeps us awake at night, you know, that there's enough money coming in the bank to pay the bills. And hopefully, that period is gone, and we are back to normal. I mean, I shouldn't say back to normal, but we are stable right now.
Yes. And, you know, I know with, you know, the mayor and I have been in this budget subcommittee for a couple of years now, and I know, you know, with mayor and I, we were really concerned, you know, the year before last in 2020, and then again last year. And so, again, to your point, the concern of that $12 million loss, here you are pointing out to an, you know, $8 million over.
Over.
And that is very significant. So thank you.
Our fund balance is back where it should be.
And so, but again, I think this is on the record, and for those that are watching us and those who will watch this meeting later, is, goes back to this council and you, of course, as well as our City Manager's commitment to our residents. And we hope and I pray that we can continue to move forward with balanced budgets. I think that is Downey's commitment to our residents. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So this is, yeah, this is the general fund revenue in a pie chart. You see that sales tax and the property tax is about 65%. Those are two major revenue sources for the city, and then you add this utility user tax, that brings it to 72%. Those are your three major revenue sources for the city. Next slide, please. This graph really gets a little distorted because of the pension obligation bonds we issued last year. And if you see the far right, the blue bar, that shows the $112 million coming in. So then what makes up is that the other graphs, the other bar gets a little smaller in comparison, but otherwise, this is a very good graph to look at. It gives you actual for 2021 to actual year-to-date. Now, the first column is 2021, the full year. The second column is March, year-to-date 21. Third column is March, year-to-date 2022, and then the budget for the last year and this year. So it's very good, and I want to, if you look at on the second column, which is the sales tax, it will tell you, and if you look at the line number three on sales tax, March, year-to-date, in '22, second line, second row, I'm sorry, was $16 million. And the year-to-date, March, this year is $20 million, increase of $4 million. That's the highlight. I mean, if you look at minutely and each and every one, we are ahead in each and every revenue sources that we have. It's a good thing. Next slide, please. Now, this is the UUT. If you look at the gas, look at the dark, I think it's blue, the dark bar, on the first two, gas and electric, it's higher, and then telephone is lower. And if you look at the year-to-date 2021 and read the numbers, everything is going in Next slide, please. Taxes. Here we go again. Property tax, sales tax, UUT, total. All the bars, the red bars, is higher than the budgeted bar. Next slide, please. Sales tax, same thing here to show you that we are really doing good in sales tax. These are just the budget columns, but if I had the actual for this year, it will be standing right by the budgeted for '22, '23. Next slide. And this chart we talked about.
Can we just stop there for a second?
Sure.
I don't want to dismiss any of the good work the city has done, but I think one of the primary things that brought up the online is the state of California and the other states in this country putting a stop to the nonsense that was going on of everything going back and forth across state lines and not getting taxed because they, quote, "didn't have a presence." And now, we're insisting that we get our fair share of tax revenue instead of, you know, pretending that nothing was happening and everybody was somehow domiciled in South Dakota and Delaware. And I think, and especially as people move away from brick and mortar and online, it's going to be very important that we make sure that that continues so that, you know, the fair share of sales taxes is coming to California in every city.
Thank you, Councilmember LaPlante. That's a very good point. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. What is slide before that? No, okay, then skip. Let's go one slide ahead. This is expenditures. And if you see the '22, '23 column, we had 103 million. General government, and we'll compare with the two budgets. General government is your entire third floor, starting with city council offices, city clerk, city manager, city attorney. Plus, you come to second floor, HR, and then you come to ground floor, finance, that makes up the general government. General government, it shows down 450,000 something. The reason, it's not down, really. When the city had issued a 2005 pension obligation bonds, at that time, it was a very small issue, and the debt service was about 1.7 million. That issue was always part of the finance department. So the general, if you add that 1.7, you are really up 1.2 million. If you take that anomaly out, it's 1.2 million, the general government went up. The reason, and if you look at, and we'll go down the, let's have the first bird's eye view, 8.3 million. Of the 8.3 million, you know, what was the increase? The major increase is about 7.5 million in the pension and salary and salary cost, about 1.3, which is for the general plan update, which we had talked about earlier in the revenue. We showed the money coming in, now we're going to show the money going out for 1.3, which is part of the CDD. So going back to general government now, so million two, all through the departments, that 7.5 I talked about, the pension cost, the salary COLA and all that is distributed all over the 8.3 million. Now, we have a little bit deep dive into that. Of the 7.5, about 4 million increase in purse cost is because when we issued the bonds, we had, the bond savings was 60 million over the period of 20 years of the life of the bonds. But for the first year, for the pandemic, the way we had structured the bonds, that we wanted a little bit more savings in the first year, about 4 million, that will help us through the tide, through the pandemic. So that 4 million now, we have to pay, the second year, when you compare year to year, that's why that number is going up. Now, go a couple of slides back. Yeah, that one. You see, the very first column is the year we issued the bonds. Rather than going in the numbers, but if you look at the gap between the blue and the red bar, and then the second year, which is the '22, '23, the gap between the blue and the red bar is a little bit smaller than the first year, because the first year, the savings was larger compared to the second year, which we are into the second year now. I hope I'm making sense to you.
I'm going to ask all the staff to repeat what you just said.
With my accent, okay?
Just kidding.
Then I don't mind, but they'll watch it up. So having said that, you know, this is a very pet project for me, so I always try to talk about it. But if you look at the purse cost on the far right, purse cost fiscal year 15, 16 was 11 million. If you look at '25, '26, it's going to be at 23 million. And if we didn't do anything, it would have been at 27 million, which would have been hard to sustain.
Right.
So, okay, I did my part. Move to the first couple of slides.
Can you stay there for a second?
Which one?
That one.
Yeah.
Explain in simple terms for me and the public, what the heck we did this. I appreciate that we saved all the money.
Yes.
How?
So.
What's the deal? What's the trick here?
So if I go back into the memory, our unfunded liability is 212 million, the big, the big elephant. Of the 212 million, we did about 100, we refinanced 112 million. The 212 million had 42 amortization bases to pay the purse. And purse is charging us 7%.
Okay.
We issued the bonds, when we issued the bonds, we were the like 20th city. When we issued the bonds, based on my presentation, I'll take all my credit, okay, here.
No, I don't remember your presentation, that's why I'm asking.
But we issued the bonds, and that time, when we issued the bond, we were the lowest in the state at that time at 2.6%.
Okay.
The difference between 7 and 2.6% is that savings that you saw.
Okay.
Total savings is 60 million over the life of the bonds.
Okay.
But in the very first year, instead of taking two or three million savings, we took 4 million in savings. That's how we structured the deal.
Okay. So basically, what we did was we issued bonds to prepay this purse.
That's correct. That's correct, at a lower interest rate.
The cities have to worry about individually, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
As opposed to schools, which I'm familiar with, we're all just one big huge mess.
That's correct.
Cities are independent.
Yes.
The cities are independent in the pool.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And if I may add again, that was a historic low interest rate.
Oh, yeah.
And that's why, you know, taking advantage of that, Anil said we were the 20th city to do that. That, you know, we had been studying that for quite some time.
Thank you.
To make sure, to make sure that that came through at such a historic low.
And we were at 67% funded at the time of issuance. Now we are about 85%. Go forward, please. So general government, we talked about, so talking about the purse and the salary cost is distributed all over all the departments. So it will be hard to identify how much is, how much isn't there. But I can give you the highlights. In general government, a couple of things, the city clerk has added 100,000 in contractual service for all the PRR review by the law firm. And then there's another 257,000 for election coming up in November. We have budgeted 257,000, but I think the county estimate is 140,000. But we have got some cushion over there for future. Police is 3.5, salary cost, pension. It also includes two positions that we mentioned earlier, the one sworn officer and one dispatch. That's part of the 3.5. There's about 400,000 in there for that. No, I'm sorry, not those two. I stand corrected. The two positions that's in there is for the DUSD, the sworn police officers that will be working at the Downey Unified School District.
No, I don't.
I'm sorry. No, no. So let me just clarify a couple of things. One is, there are two officers that will be school resource officers that we are working with an agreement with Downey Unified School District. They will pay 100% of the cost of those two officers. The advantage for us in that is that when those officers are not at the school sites, you know, during parts of the summer or, you know, parts of the evening, they will be on patrol for the city. So we get that added benefit for that. In addition to that, so that's 100% covered by the Downey Unified School District. In addition to that, the chief and I have had some discussions about leasing in the city. One of the things that we wanted to do is add another police officer, primarily because we, there's been a lot of issues with speeding, as you all know, some of that. So we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we had another officer for that. And there's been a lot more activity in our downtown as it continues to grow, so we wanted to make sure that we had an additional officer of that. We also had some issues with part-timers in our dispatch center, and so we got to the point where there's also a number of overtime people coming in. So it got to the point where the amount of overtime we're doing was equivalent to just hiring another position. So that's what we ended up doing. So in all in all, we've added, you know, four spots for our police department.
But two positions, the sworn for the DUSD is reflected in this number, that once you approve, we'll put it in there.
Can I just follow, just following up? Every time we add a police officer, what's the extra cost? If I said I wanted 10 more police officers, what would be the cost per officer?
180,000.
How much?
180,000.
Yeah, I was going to round it up to two, but.
No, with overtime, it's two.
Roughly 200,000, roughly $200,000.
No, you can go with two. I mean, I'm.
Yeah. So if somebody asks you, well, why don't you add some more police? Here's what it costs.
Right, right.
Because, you know, right now, there are people who are going, oh, we need to put police in every school and.
Well, let me just, here's the other thing. One is we're hiring additional police officers. But we also, not that long ago, hired an additional 10 officers that we did not have.
Right.
Through Measure S.
Yeah, through Measure S. So we, we've, over the last several years, we've added more police officers than we've had in a long time, so.
Oh, I understand, yes.
Yeah. So, but to your point, it's, you know, look, quality public safety is not cheap.
Right.
And we've always had the best police force and the best officers that you can get. And so it's roughly around $200,000 per body.
Great.
And how many, as a reminder, how many sworn police officers do we have?
I believe the number is 121.
Going down the fire, same thing, it's all personnel cost, public works, parks and rec. Parks and rec, we are going 100% this year with full staffing for the part-timers. Couple of things, the budget went up for the parks and rec is, one is that we added 300,000 for the theater and 135,000 for the downtown events. So that makes about half of the increase in there. CDD, we talked about million three for the general plan update. And the rest is personnel and then transfer out, same thing, nothing much change in there. The biggest transfer out of the million five is million three to our space center to fund that program. General fund has to subsidize the space center about million three a year. But Mr. Ben DeCao is doing an excellent job with a passion. Every penny is worth it. I give you a shout out, Ben. I'll go for lunch now. So that's 8 million you saw coming in, 8 million going out. Lord, give it, Lord, take it. Next slide, please.
You are funny. I needed the laughter. Thank you. See, you make this budget session really lively. Nobody falls asleep with you and me.
Or is it my accent? Come on, be honest. All right, going, so this is the.
Did we skip the real, the one time?
Yes, we did. I'm sorry. Go back three slides, please. One more, I think. No, go down, go down. Forward more, yeah. So this is, this is the sale of Kaiser property, 13.3 million. We did it in two batches. And this is the suggested, somebody's already been designated, some is there, for the chief herlock, we bought a new ladder truck so he can cruise around town for 1.8 million.
So again, the sale of the property, again, for those that will be watching this session, that sale is this number, which means it's already been allocated. And these are the future capital it needs.
Yeah, right.
That's property that's off of Balfour Boulevard, right next to the promenade. So that's where that property is. It was roughly, I think, a total of five, five plus two, seven acres roughly of land that we've been negotiating with Kaiser probably the last year and a half or so. So the breakout there that you see are the 10, you know, the ladder truck and the ambulance, again emphasizing the public safety component, you know, those are items that are big ticket items that typically we would have had to pay out of our general fund. We were able to pay cash. And typically, a lot of times, those big purchases, we end up leasing, at which we have to pay a premium for leasing because you're paying it over time. In this particular case, we had this one-time money, we were able to go ahead and purchase them outright, which is a big deal and a big savings to the general fund. The space center, number three, that's actually, we ended up getting roughly 5.8 million dollars from the state. We are putting additional money in there because 5.8 million doesn't get you and your building anymore and your museum. So that's $4 million. And again, you're talking about, you know, going back to the future, building the home of the inspiration where it all started. So, and the property money is coming from the site where it was built. So it kind of makes sense that it all gets recycled in the same place. So that's $4 million. The city, yes.
So the whole project, there'll be round numbers, 10?
Yes.
And so roughly six of it is coming from the state, and we're putting in the other four.
That's correct.
Right.
Right. And then city hall improvements. So, you know, we're finally, you know, just like any household, you know, you need to make investments into your roof, into your paint, into the infrastructure of your, otherwise the place doesn't, doesn't hold up. We've made improvements to, you know, to our police station, to our fire facilities, to our parks, to our theater, but we haven't touched city hall since it was built. So there are a number of improvements that we need to do. HVAC, for example, we need to do some painting. There's a number of things that need to be done, so we're putting about 2.5 million aside for that. And there is a backlog of projects, public works projects, that need to be taken care of, you know, like park furniture, things of that nature that need to be done that we weren't able to cover under Measure S, but we're able to tackle those now. We ended up doing San Gabriel Park. If you remember, that thing was all the, it was a mess. So we ended up doing that. And then the city maintenance yard, you just approved that. It's ironic that we're doing all these streets, but our city maintenance yard looked like, you know, third world country there. So we were ending up doing the maintenance yard, and then we're adding additional lighting at Furman Park, which we were not able to cover under Measure S, just because we just didn't have enough money. So we're doing that. Being cognizant of the fact that we're going into negotiations here in the near future, it's prudent for us to put some money aside for those negotiations as we move forward. Not that we ever use one-time fees, but what it does is offsets that, and so that we don't have to put as much into it. So we have those calls. So we're just being prudent in terms of putting a little bit of money aside for that, because those are just right around the corner. And then we're finally going to close out Measure S permanently, just like any particular project. You know, there are things that we wanted to do that went a little bit over in terms of, not over, but we added things. We had the additional items that we added. So we're putting some money in that to finally close that book out for good, and we'll put Measure S behind us for good. So that essentially covers the full amount of that one-time cost of land of sale, but it all, as you can see, went to really good uses. So that's what that money covers.
Thank you, Gil.
Go ahead. So go back to the last slide, yeah. Those are expenditures. If you see there, if you look at on the right-hand side, police is 40% of the budget and fire is 25, that brings 65%. And on the other side of the coin is your property tax and sales tax is 65% or 66%. So it's a wash between the two. And the rest, we, once they take all the money, then we, what's left over, we try to make a living here. So, next slide. Same here, the far left, the blue graph for the POB, paying the purse. So that makes a little distorted the other bar graphs.
Anil, I think you've already milked that for credit as much as you're going to, right?
Okay, all right, okay.
Let's go.
All right, sir. So, next slide, please. This is our authorized position. There, we have got five new positions that we are requesting this year, four in Downey Police Department. The two is that we just talked about, the sworn officers at the DU Unified School District, which is be fully reimbursable by the school district, no cost to the city. The other two are one sworn officer, which is going to be a motor cop. which is going to be a motor cop, am I correct, chief? Is someone going to be a motor cop? And then other one is a, a safety dispatcher. And then we got one-time, part-time social media intern. We'd like to convert that to a full-time position. But for that position, we've got enough money in the budget that we can, we are not asking for more money. We are just for asking for approval of the position. So we're asking for three more positions that, to be approved by the, in fact, five. I mean, the two, which is fully reimbursable by the general fund, I mean, by the, to the general fund and three more, five. Last year we had 425, now we had 430. And there are two more reclasses, which is really minimum cost to the city or no cost probably. Associate civil engineer in utilities to senior civil engineer and maintenance worker, two to maintenance lead worker. Those are just the two reclasses and five positions. Any questions there? Next slide, please. We'll just go into the economic overview.
I, I actually did have a question.
Yes.
Anil, and if you go back to the slide, I see, of course, the one part-time social media intern will be converted to a full-time position. I, I'd like to ask the cost of a communications director.
Well, in, in terms of, it, it depends what your goal is, right? So social media person, what they end up doing is your daily tracking and daily posting, right, of all your social media, you know, Instagram, Twitter, so forth, so on, taking videos, making sure that the city's news gets out there. A communication director denotes that you have people for them to supervise and that they're, they're conducting a staff of several people. In this particular case, we, we have one person that's done that. And, and that's by design is that we've always been cognizant of the amount of, of money that we attribute to staffing. In this particular case, we had a part-time person. We think that we have enough going on right now that that should be a full-time position. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, and I, and I'd like to thank you for, for clarifying. I know some people have, have asked about that. In, in a time of so much change, not just for the city of Downey, but I think cities in general, where we really need to look at strategy and, and communications. I, I would like us to, and certainly as we looking at the budget now, but I really would like us to think about a, some type of a communication supervisor or, or position that, aside from this social media position, but someone that really will augment the, the communications that, you know, go out. I think that is, that is, the time is now and with, with circumstances changing. I think it's, it's very valuable that cities look at a communications lead, someone that is, you know, fully in charge of, of the, not just the social media presence, but really is able to coordinate all that, that goes with it.
Just to give you hopefully some, some level of comfort in order for us to mitigate some of the, the, the cost of that. What we've done is Judy Montenegro is actually our P O that supervises that particular position. But also, we have a contract that the council has approved with Treppeby Smith, who is a, basically a, a media consultant, really is what they do. So we run a lot of stuff through them. And then there are a couple of on-call media professionals that we, we actually call them and say, when we have a, a delicate issue that we need some help with, then we bring them on board to give us direction and help us with that. Now, at some point, it's, you know, if the council fills the need to, to grow that department more, they can certainly, you know, do that. And you can see how it goes once you have the full-time director and see how it goes. But, you know, I will leave that to the council's, you know, discretion, you know. You know, right, right now, I think we're, we're sort of managing that pretty, pretty well. But again, I think we keep an eye on it is, I think, what you're saying, so.
Next slide, please. This is just the economic overview. U S economy continues to recover from the COVID-19 health crisis. GDP is 6.9 increase for the fourth quarter '21. Forecast for the next year, I mean, for the current year is 3.2% and 2.1% in the next year. CPI, which is a big elephant in the room, 8.5% from March to March '21 to '22. The only, the only thing I can tell about CPI for the April CPI was 8.3%, a little lower than, than 8.5. So maybe you are going in the right direction. I don't know. Unemployment, 3.6% for April. Pre-pandemic level was 3.5. So we are same at unemployment level at three, three and a half percent. Next slide. California unemployment decreased to 4.9. Same thing from the near pre-pandemic level of 4.1. Labor force almost back to full capacity. Housing market, single-family home sales slowly declining. April 1, 22, 21 to 22, 8.5% drop. Record home prices increasing rates. Lack of inventory to budget. And for the state of California, they had a record, record-breaking budget. Proposed budget included 286.4 billion with a surplus of 98 billion. Next slide, please. L.A. County decrease, unemployment decreased to 5.5%. Housing market median price, 865,000 countywide. Home sales fell 17% from last year. Record-high prices soaring mortgage rates pushed the cost of buying 36% higher. CPI, 8.5% we just talked about. Next slide. Downey, local economy improving. Unprecedented sales tax growth. I mean, I'll take you about the sales tax for the city of Downey with the diverse, diverse sales tax base. All the restaurants that, 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 in this town, they are saying they're number one in the nation, I mean, like Olive Garden. They're, they're highly rated in their chain as one of the top gross. Same thing with Benihana or, yeah, Lazy Dog, BJ's, they are all doing very good. Even, even, even the small businesses, in small restaurants in the town. They're all, I look at their numbers, it's just amazing. Especially Raising Gaines, I can't believe their numbers. Next, unemployment at 5.3%. Number of household in 2021 was an 11% increase over the prior year, not in '22. Every sell home price in 2021 was 788,000 compared to 704 in 2020. So these are our budget challenges. Repudiation exists over projected growth. Sales and property tax revenue as the economy continues to recover. I mean, property tax, the pre, on the pandemic, we wouldn't know the effect of pandemic till the next year because there's a two-year lag between the, you know, how the, the county system works in property tax. Sales tax is all related to the supply chain. What's that, talk about supply chain disruptions? And whenever 21% of our sales tanks come from auto industry and the microchip shortage, that's really slowing us down like. Now, this is my Google knowledge talking. I was looking at like E, E-Mac, the Mustang, requires 800 chips for that car. For every little thing, you need a chip. Ford Fusion, maybe 300 chips. So it, it varies. And, and, and one of the big thing is the chip shortage. And Biden administration is very proactive to get the semiconductor business back to United States, but it takes time. It, it won't be easy. It's probably looking another three, four hours before we really resolve the chip industry. I mean, semiconductor chips coming back to United States.
Hours?
Three, I mean, three, four years. Thank you for catching that. I was checking on you guys.
I thought so.
Thank you. Historically, high inflation. We talked about the CPI. And they say half of the CPI is based on the gas, gas prices, who knows? Housing, housing is still fall, right, you know? The shortage of housing, starting with 2008, when 2008, people started to stop building houses. And, and that caught up. And then the lower interest rates made housing affordable buying. And so there's lack of inventory. And in Downey, we sell about, single-family homes is about five to, they sell about four, about anywhere from 450 to 550 a year, single-family homes in city of Downey. And, and that number is going down now for the single-family homes to be sold because there is lack of inventory. Increasing CPI. And, and the most critical budget challenge is prudent management of expenditures in alignment to revenue. We can't be spending more than what we get in. And we should always, you know, eye on the ball. And, and with the budget subcommittee, we always try to do that. And that's end of my presentation. If you have any questions. Judy is here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, Anil, why don't you go ahead to your next slide, to your department? So we're gonna go ahead and kick off to department ones. And, and let, let me just remind folks to be brief. We're, we're, you know, now an hour into it, so.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right, next slide. This is all we do, essential services provided, real is day-to-day. Work we do. Next slide, please. Accomplishments, you know, maintain the city's double A bond rating. Balanced budget, next slide.
And Anil, let me, let me stop you there very, for, for a quick second. For the residents, what is a double A plus bond rating? What does that mean?
So that, that double A is the investment rate, grade, bond rate. I mean, anything over the, the double B is investment grade. Then you go to double, double A, then double A plus. Then you go to triple A. But there are very few cities in California with triple A. But for the triple A, the, the requirements are very different to be a triple A city. This is the best we can do with our, with our situ-, with our demographics, our location and everything. And, and double A plus is a very good rating in the financial market that for, because of a double A plus, we go to two points. I'm gonna go back to and milk that P O B again. 2.6, 2.6% rating, I mean, 2, 2.6% interest rate. Our K D, I think, is a triple A rating. And, and they go to 2.7 interest rate. So really, it varies, but, 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 but it's a very good investment grade rating, double A plus.
And let me, if I could just boil it for those residents watching, let me just boil it down to it's no different than your, your credit report, your credit score, your FICO score. And so the, the, the better FICO score you have means that you're managing money and your credit well, which means your ability to borrow money is a lot cheaper than somebody's credit score who is not managing their money well, doesn't have a good credit score. So, I mean, that's probably the most equivalent way to explain it, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. My goals and objectives is pretty much the same. You updated the five-year financial projections. You know, we are working with a cost allocation plan right now to get it wrapped up in a month or so. And then it's all I T-related. Next slide, please. Alvin, you want to come here?
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, City Council. I T, we are full service in terms of servicing internal staff. As you can see there, we, you know, support fire department, police department, transit, parks, every, every single department there is there. I understand time is short, so I'm just gonna move on to. No, I just need to switch to the next slide. There you go, thank you. For accomplishment, I'm just gonna hit main top item there, really. This year, you know, our, our focus is really on cybersecurity. As we all know, cybersecurity is the biggest threat to pretty much any organization. And so, you know, our, our focus is setting up some internal policies on how we conduct our operations as well as addressing, you know, cybersecurity for insurance purposes. You know, making sure we have backup that meet the risk management side. So those are stuff that we've accomplished this year. And I'll move on to the next goals. Really, again, next year, really, our goal is, strong focus is on cybersecurity again. Just because it's so dynamic, that, that always changes. So we're gonna just put a lot of our energy and resources in focusing on cybersecurity, addressing that. The rest, I'll just leave it there. I'll be glad to take any question if there is any.
No questions, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide, please.
I'm gonna go ahead and kick this over to Vanya. Vanya, come on up.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Today I'll be presenting the City Manager's Office, goals and objectives for the upcoming year and the accomplishments from the last fiscal year. As you're aware, the, through the City Manager, the Division is responsible for the implementation of policy decisions established by the Downey City Council and the coordination of those efforts through the various city departments. It's also responsible for P I O relations, A D A, language access legislative analysis and special projects with homelessness and veterans programs and grant management. In regards to accomplishments of the last fiscal year, the Division coordinated mid-manager and citywide staff trainings that provided developmental tools for staff at all levels of the organization. It completed the 2021 redistricting process using 2020 census data that resulted in the adoption of a new redistricting map that was done at the April 12 meeting. Implemented the Shower Hope Program. Completed oversight of Measure S projects. Successful management of the American Rescue Plan stimulus funds. Expanded the promotion of the successful Downey store at City Advance. Coordinated various ribbon-cutting events for Measure S projects. Reinstituted the Business Watch Program with coordination with P D and Chamber of Commerce. Also continued informing the public regarding COVID-19. This included, of March 31st, over 607, 6,700 social media posts and over 4,600 calls on the COVID-19 hotline and regular updates on our website. It also, we increased followers across all social media platforms. When you add them together, the increase was 18.3%. And also coordinated various city videos, successful community events such as Veterans Day, Tree Lighting, Downey One Day, Holiday Caravans, as well as COVID-19 mass distribution and field distribution events with Suvaraj Hahn and Assembly Garcia, Member Garcia. For the upcoming fiscal year, the Division will be exploring an online system for A D A requests and complaints to streamline the process for the public. Continue to increase social media followers and presence. Increase ongoing public communication regarding city awards and achievements. Hold the Girls on Fire program and expand it. It's gonna go from 100 girls to 150 girls. And include other programming that have similar themes such as the Girls in STEM from the Space Center. Mental health event with youth commission members. Use of flash vote, which is a new tool to use more of a panelist survey as opposed to the regular conventional surveys through mailers and phones. Hold a team-up to cleanup event that targets specific areas in the community. And then also, it's working with a public education consultant for a potential transient occupancy tax at the upcoming November ballot. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff, I'd like to thank the City Council for its continued leadership and support of staff as it executes these programs under the City Council's five overarching priorities. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Except there's no questions, great, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanya.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pacheco and council members. Thank you this, for this opportunity to share with you. My name's Sandra Vera and I'm the Human Resources Manager and I will be presenting for Human Resources in James McLean's absence. As you see in front of you, Human Resources is responsible for a variety of areas that help support the city's objective and goals as listed in the slide. Okay, some of our notable accomplishments for this year, recruitment's were a little busier as we came back from COVID. So we hired 42 full-time and 114 part-time employees, including eight police officers and five firefighters. We had 100, I'm sorry, 820 personnel changes to employee pay and benefits. We offered 11 training sessions to employ. We offered 11 training sessions to employees on a variety of topics. We had city's employee, city's employee COVID response, we included maintaining and updated plan and policy and responding to over 290 employee inquiries. We expanded our online training platform. We revised the administrative regulation, um, regarding family care and medical care leaves, um, which includes legislative updates from Senate Bill 1383 and Assembly Bill 1033. We also updated our full-time and part-time evaluation forms. Some goals, um, for this year, labor negotiations with Downey Fire, uh, Men's Association and also Downey Fire Management Association. D P A was previously listed on here, but, um, we did get ahead of and were able to, um, get negotiations going and that was approved, um, at the last council meeting. We also have a goal of labor negotiations with the Downey Police Management Association as well as Downey City Employees Association, the miscellaneous unit, the maintenance unit and the safety auxiliary unit. We will also continue to expand our web-based training to include more safety focused training and conduct 10 to 20 employee training courses throughout the year for employees and supervisors. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions?
Seeing none. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Sorry, got to lower this. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I will be presenting the City Clerk Budget on behalf of City Clerk Alicia Dorte. I'll provide a brief overview of our office. I'm sure you're very familiar as, uh, we prepare and distribute council meeting agendas such as for this meeting, we conduct municipal elections and we process and respond to public records requests among other duties such as records management and, uh, other, um, public participation engagement related duties. So our accomplishments for the previous year, we, um, collaborated with the city attorney to fill the council District Two vacancy. We managed a ballot measure initiative. Uh, we collaborated with L A County Registrar Recorder to host two vote centers at city facilities. So that'll be opening shortly on June, uh, 4th, uh, for four-day voting. Uh, we have also to date received and processed over 650 public records requests and a combined 60 subpoenas, summons and claims. And, uh, we've also processed over 80, uh, council-approved agendas and contracts. Uh, so moving on, uh, let's see here. We, let's go over the goals for the next fiscal year. So we are going to be managing the November 8th, 2022 general municipal election for districts two and four. We'll be updating the city's records retention schedule. That's currently in process right now. We'll be conducting the biennial, uh, review and update of the city's conflict of interest code. We'll be collaborating with the city attorney's office to host, uh, two A B, uh, 1234 ethics trainings for, uh, council, uh, staff and boards of commission members. We'll be implementing the agenda management software and training staff on the process. And we will be identifying and implementing a public records request, uh, management software so we can streamline the process for P R Rs and reduce the staff time needed to process them. And that'll conclude my presentation. I'm available for questions.
I, I do have a question, if I may. On bullet point number three, conduct the biennial review and update of the city's conflict of interest code. Is this, uh, does this have anything to do with, um, council and council's conflict of interests?
Uh, no. So what we do is this is standard practice is every two years or so, city clerks offices go through and we work with staff to see if our list i- is up to date, if there's any staff members, members that need to be added or they don't need to file their Form 700s. But, uh, per the government code, I think 87200, um, council members do have to file, but that won't affect your filing in any way, just our, uh, list of who does need to file.
I see. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Of the 600 and, oh, get mad at me. Of the 650 public records request, how many different people made those requests? Do you know?
We do receive a number of requests from a lot of different companies. A lot of them do, you know, zoning requests, uh, fire, just site reviews for commercial buildings. We, uh, do have a number of people who submit multiple, but at this time I don't have the number of how many individual requesters we have over the past year.
Kind of interesting to see whether, uh, we're just, you know, regular people were coming in and asking for stuff, or whether it's the same people coming in asking for stuff after stuff after stuff.
Well, let me, let me just say this. In any city, you're always going to have a group of folks that will continuously ask for information and they do it repeatedly. That said, we also have ongoing folks that will, um, whether it's their, their companies, they're, they may be bidding on something and they want to see a contract from a previous. So we get a lot of that as well. So we get both.
Any other questions?
Seeing none. Great job.
Thank you so much. There we go.
Okay, moving along. Ben, you're up.
Need to raise this a little bit. Sorry. No. Good afternoon, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me today and colleagues. Uh, I wanted to present the Columbia Memorial Space Center first. Uh, the Space Center is, uh, full-on space museum and hands-on science learning center, uh, located here in the city of Downey. Uh, we are the living memorial to what happened here in the city in our history and then also to the Columbia Space Shuttle astronauts. Uh, we've become a regional leader in hands-on STEM education and, uh, not just in education, but also just in public education. We have forged, uh, many partnerships over the past few years to broaden our reach and make sure that we're not just staying within the center, but that we, that we educate everyone around us. In the 20, it, for our accomplishments this year, um, we reopened after being closed for over a year because of COVID. It allowed us to integrate our online programs that we had been doing for the past couple of years into our, back into our in-person programming. And the highlight is our hybrid programming with L A U S D. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we forged the, a pretty strong partnership with their, um, instructional office and we've been doing L A U S D programming in after-school settings, uh, since 2020. So that's just been, uh, keeps going. But maybe more important is we actually started the design process for the expansion of the Space Center, which has been a long time coming and it's been very exciting. Also, we've been, uh, expanding our Girls in STEM program. It's become a real jewel and now we're forging, um, partnerships and having chapters of Girls in STEM clubs throughout the region. For the next year, we hope to, uh, break ground on the new building. That's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of time of the Space Center and Space Center staff. At the same time, we want to be able to fully ramp up our in-person field trip programs. Uh, field trips account for around 40% of our visitorship and we, there have not been field trips since, uh, March of 2020. We anticipate though, that this year is going to, they're going to be coming back in full force. So we're already reaching out to school districts. We're already doing, um, advertising and promotion to make sure that we have those bookings in there. At the same time, we, we are going to be expanding our community programming and making some improvements inside our current building so that when we open the new building, it doesn't look too different. And like I said, uh, launching our capital campaign through the Space Center Foundation. Any questions on the Space Center?
We do have a question.
Yeah. How big is the new building going to be? Where is it physically going to sit?
Physically going to sit right behind the current building. There's a field, you know, along, um, Columbia Way.
Okay.
Size-wise though, it's still in the design process. We're hoping for something between 15 and 20,000 square feet to be able to hold the shuttle and then be big enough for large gatherings.
Okay. How big is the current building?
The current building is around 20,000, I think it's about 18,000 square feet.
Okay. I'm just trying to compare what.
It'll be about the same. Yeah.
So you will have two buildings roughly speaking the same size.
Exactly.
Okay. And the inspiration is that wooden thing?
The very first space shuttle ever built.
I, I understand. I saw it when it came, when we brought it out that one day.
All right.
I was there, watching it come out and did that little.
Little tent?
Whatever we put it in for a few days.
Before my time.
Yeah. Uh, but, uh, so that'll, and that'll be going and being preserved in the new building.
Exactly. Yeah.
And what school districts do you, I know you obviously collaborate with Downey Unified, but who else? Who else? Because we've got districts around here that could easily get here.
That's the beauty of where we're located is we're close to Long Beach, you know, obviously Downey Unified, Bellflower, A B C, all those school districts we collaborate with historically in the past. During COVID, uh, the number, really the two heaviest district usage was Downey Unified and L A U S D. Um, as we're moving into the new school year, we're kind of restarting all the relationships we've had in the past and they're all starting to book field trips.
I, I appreciate that we've, that we've been looking southbound. We can also, you know, look northbound because we got, we can have Montebello, El Rancho and the various Whittiers that are just as close as Long Beach or A B C. And we could certainly help those students too and.
Yeah. I think, um, I think Montebello is going to start a Girls in STEM club program in the next school year. So absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, you listed all the south bounds. Now, now let's look northbound because they're, the streets run that way too.
They have buses out here.
Yeah.
I, I have a question, Ben. Are there going to be, um, space camps back, uh, this summer?
Yes.
I, I know, you know, there's been a lot of, um, a lot of anticipation and as you pointed out, a lot of school districts are, you know, reopening. So we, do we have a, a summer program, um, taking off with in-person activities?
Five work, five-week summer space camp program that's all sold out. Unfortunately, it's sold out in about half a day. Um, we're doing three levels this year, uh, early childhood and then, uh, upper elementary and junior high.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
And do we know, uh, approximately when we would be having the groundbreaking for this Space Center expansion? Do we have an approximation?
We don't have an approximation yet. We're still too early in the design process to get to that point, but it will be in the next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along to the library. Oh, I didn't even go. Here's some pictures. The Downey City Library. The Downey City Library is a independent library of the city of Downey, not a county library. And I, and this, this slide, I want to, um, reiterate that the Space Center library have this very special relationship that doesn't exist in many other places. We've been able to build this fantastic infrastructure of public education. We've streamlined our, uh, services, some of our staff and our mission, which is to ignite a community of creative and critical thinkers. That's what access to information and applying it is all about. This year, we've really capitalized on that, um, and been able to launch our maker programming and our workshop. Uh, our biggest accomplishment this year, just like the Space Centers, that we reopened after being closed for COVID. Uh, and not only did we reopen, but reopened in a brand-new revamped building, um, which has offered us all kinds of fantastic opportunities to change what we do and how we do it. Uh, we also started a, the first annual Beyond the Book Festival, which is going to be just like City of STEM, but for the library. Um, it's all about culture and art and history and reading and basic skills, uh, one day in September, every year. Our goals for the year is to continue to increase accessibility to library materials. That's always number one for us. We want to make sure that everybody has access for free to what the library offers. We're going to be expanding the Beyond the Book Festival. Um, we do have a, we built a studio next to the workshop, which is all about digital creation. So this year we'll be leaning full into that. It'll be a place where you can do a podcast or something like that. Um, we have an early childhood outreach program that's being supported by a grant from the state of California and the state library system that will be, uh, coming online. And then always, uh, expanding library social media. We've also gone through an internal strategic planning process. Now that we have a new building, uh, we'll be implementing that strategic plan in the new year. Any questions on the library?
We have a question.
I do have a question.
Can you go ahead first?
So there is a plan for a cafeteria or any other thing right next to the library in the outside area?
Yeah, where the old Vaz Cafe used to be? Yeah, we have to go, yes, uh, we have to start, restart the R F P process for that for a vendor there. Um, the previous operator decided pretty late that they didn't want to come back to it. So now we have to start that whole process over again.
And the other question I was going to ask is that door specifically next to the caf- cafe is going to be working until then or is it going to be working before then?
It'll be working before then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. And then we have another question from Councilmember La Plana.
Philosophical question. Why do we still have library fines? It's all of $3,000 in the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Why do we, I mean, that sounds, to me, it's the 1950s. Give us your, eh, you're late today. I want to nickel out of you. That, that kind of librarian attitude that, uh, we all remember from the comics.
Councilmember, that is not me. I'm not that kind of librarian, if I'm a librarian at all. But, uh, definitely a library director though. That's a good question and I think it is a holdover from the 50s. Um, most of the libraries around us now have gone fine-free, including the county system. Uh, it's something that worth looking at.
I, I would just suggest, because I know that the county had gone fine-free and so have most others. I mean, it's not a revenue issue. It's $3,000. But it's more of a philosophical issue of shouldn't we be more accommodating? I mean, obviously if somebody loses the thing, I lost and I need to pay for you to replace it, that's a different discussion. People could, they lose the book, they lose the whatever they loan, we loaned them, they could replace it for the benefit of the community. But the nickel and dime fines is like, just send them an email and a text message and tell them to bring it back.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Seeing no questions? Thank you. As always, great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, I will be presenting on the Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Recreation professionals always felt like we were essential and during COVID, uh, I think it really came out nationally of just how essential we really were. Uh, access to open space and green space for both mental and physical health was a really big deal and I think we did that in our community. Protecting our most vulnerable residents was something else we did. Very proud that during COVID, we presented over, uh, 115,000 meals, which is not something we did previously. And then we also had over 134,000 wellness checks, uh, to our seniors from our senior center, just making sure that they were okay. Uh, it's something that our department was very proud of. Uh, different accomplishments for us during, uh, this last year. Measure S was great and we all loved it. There were some things that did not get touched and we wanted to make sure that we continue to explore funding for some of the other park sites, which we were able to do for Rio San Gabriel, uh, and playground resurfacing for Crawford, uh, and Temple Park. Uh, we were able to work with our golf course, uh, concessionaire. As you know, COVID hit them as well. We were able to negotiate a deal with them, uh, on, on rent and, and sales and it has bounced back and we are starting to make a revenue off of that. And then the big thing was we were able to reintroduce programming, both at the theater and also our, um, programming for our special events and as well as our youth programs. Uh, one of the things that Neil alluded to were our classes. Um, all of our classes are completely sold out and full. Parents and kids are back out enjoying all the different things that recreation does. Uh, and we're excited to have them back out in our buildings and in our events as well. Some of our goals and objectives for the upcoming year, uh, we still have other, um, parks that we would like to take a look at for some potential funding. So there's grants out there that we will continue to, uh, search out and try to get. Some of those, uh, will now include Treasure Island and Brookshire Park. Uh, we want to explore creating an annual volunteer recognition event that is more of a citywide focus. Uh, we will hope to complete the installation of the playgrounds at both Temple and Crawford now that we have, uh, secured money. Uh, we would, uh, we're going to explore the potential for increasing park acreage through the right-of-way partnerships and development of current parcels. Uh, we are still a park poor community, uh, in terms of L A County. So the more green space that we can provide to our kids and our community is something that we're going to continue to try to do. Uh, and now that, uh, we are able to, um, our Special Olympics program has now returned from COVID and with that, we're looking to develop an additional adaptive programming. Uh, we would like to include, um, programming for kids, uh, with special needs, uh, social enrichment programs such as adaptive Zumba, line dancing, social meetups. We have about 80 participants in our Special Olympics class, which is sports-based only. And the one thing we hear from our parents is that there's a lot more need for social meetups, exercise and other things. So we would really like to establish that program, uh, moving forward with, um, the next year. So that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that the council might have.
I have a question, Jason. Um, thank you for the presentation. Really good, really, really good. Are we incorporating, um, classes, uh, swimming classes for special needs, uh, children as well? I, I think that, that has been, um, something that our community and, and our residents have really, um, reached out to us about over the last, you know, several years. Of course, COVID put a, a lid on a lot of those things, but are we also being thoughtful[1793.66] But are we also being thoughtful about incorporating special-need classes for special-needs children?
Absolutely. All of our classes are geared for any student of any ability. Now, there are some different designations. Pre-COVID, we used to have classes that were specific as a special-needs class only. Because of our staffing shortages, we no longer have staff who are certified to handle just that. So what we do is we allow accommodations. So if a family member has a one-on-one that they would like to include in the water, we do that, and they're included in our regular class programs. We will over-enroll a class for a special-needs child. So if our limit is seven kids per class, we will over-enroll it for a special-needs participant, given that they have somebody in the class. We talked to the parents at length beforehand about what their needs are. If a parent feels like the child can be in the regular class setting and our instructor knows they just need to give them a little bit more attention, that's fine. But if they feel like it might take away from the other seven students in the class, we only have one instructor per eight students in our aquatics. So we try to be mindful of that and the safety needs. And it also depends on the level. If it's a Level 1 where everybody's learning and a little kid slips off the wall, it's a bigger deal than it is a Level 3 or a 4 where we can kind of manage that. So the short answer is yes, but it's on an accommodation basis. It's not a specific special-needs class. And in the industry, a lot of cities around us have gone away from that. There are a few cities which we will promote to those parents. Lamorada Splash has a very large facility with a year-round programming and staffing. So we will push people over there and let them know that that program is available for them as well.
Thank you. And is this all the information included in the quarterly magazine that is mailed out to the residents? Or how are we letting residents know that these programs, particularly on the aquatics part, is available on a per-need basis?
On all of our, on our brochure that's quarterly, as well as our other publications, we do make a note that if there's any special request for them to contact the office, and our supervisor of that division will handle that specifically with them. But we get the same question of our summer camps. Same exact thing, that we want those kids to be included. And it's a lot easier for them to have a one-on-one. If you're familiar with this system, sometimes the regional center, they use all their resources during the school year, so they might not be able to pay for it during the summer. So we try to work with them when different resources for them. But summer camp is very similar. So we ask them to talk to the supervisor of the program and work out their situation with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember LaPlante has questions?
If most of the people in this room could even find Temple Park, I'd be surprised. Golf courses, do they run at a surplus or a deficit?
Usually a deficit. The last two years, it's an enterprise fund, so it's not connected to the general fund. It's its own fund. During COVID, golf has been a very popular sport. Our goal during COVID, we were very glad to get the additional business. But our goal with our contractors there was how do we maintain that coming out of the turn of COVID? I could tell you in the last, year-to-date, from last year, LA County is down 37% right now in golf, and our Rio Hondo Golf Course is up 9%. So we continue to do very well on the golf side of things. On the, if you, our golf course is broken up into three sections. So we have our golf course, which is actually the play of golf. Then we have our maintenance, and then we have the weddings and banquets. So weddings and banquets are through the roof right now. We're actually booked out completely through next year, every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for weddings, and that's even some days that are double weddings. But the golf side of it continues to be very, very good. And for the last year and a half, we've been in a surplus.
So at this point, the golf course facility is self-sufficient?
From year to year, I would say yes. We do have a bond obligation, or we have an obligation that we pay back some loans that we did when we built the building some years ago. So we pay that debt back every year out of our earnings there. But yes, I would say that it was, we're breaking even.
Okay. Does your department handle the theater, or who handles the theater?
Correct. I handle the theater as well.
Same question.
The theater operates at a deficit. So the council has made that a priority over the years, that arts and theater are important to them. The subcommittee usually goes through the programming of the theater, and that will dictate the offset and the subsidy that the city usually has. Right now, we're operating at about $600,000 subsidy for the theater annually.
Let me, can I just jump in there? So theaters across the country operate, operated by municipalities, run at a deficit. They're seen as an amenity like a park is or whatever it may be. It's just the price of providing a service to your community.
Right.
So there are very, very few, if any, that even make money. And there's a few that break even. But in most cases, they're subsidized.
I do have a question. Sorry. Councilmember Trujillo?
I had a question. I know that Lamorada subsidizes our theater. Any idea, how many residents do they have and what's their subsidy?
Their subsidy was over 1.5 million the last time we checked. I'm not sure on their population size. But it does come down to a business model. So our business model is such that we have six to eight presenting shows a year that the subcommittee picks, and those are based on what the subcommittee feels like. They want exposure to the community. And then the rest of our dates in the theater are filled with rental clients that actually bring us revenue. So I would tell you that pre-COVID, we were at 225, 240 days of use of the theater with our current business model. Lamorada does less rentals than we do, and they do more shows, which is why they're at a higher subsidy, because it costs more to run those programs.
They're actually what they call producing theater. They actually produce the shows that they're, they have at their theater, so, which is much more costly.
And I did have a question regarding the Special Olympics that we have. What are the sports that we have for Special Olympics?
We currently have basketball, softball, soccer, and we added swimming last year. And so we also work with the school district, both Warren and Downey High School. Some of their kids and their coaches will help us coach and do some of the events at their school. We're one of the biggest partners with Southern California Special Olympics Association. So they're back on in person. And so we were one of the first agencies that they asked for help. So we're excited. Anytime they look to add a new sport, we're usually their trial run, because we have about 80 athletes. So they're playing with some stuff. I know pickleball is the next one they want to try to play with, with them. So we're going to look at that with them in the future.
That's fantastic. And I know some of our neighboring cities also send their kids over for Special Olympics.
Correct. Our program's one of the biggest in the area, and we don't, any, it's non-resident or resident. So we allow people from outside the community, and we do get a lot of people who come in.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, great job.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Crystal Landevos, and I'll be presenting for community development today. The community development, just to provide an overview, is comprised of four divisions: Planning Division, Building, Code Enforcement, and Housing and Economic Development. Together, these divisions focus on improving the community's economy as well as the neighborhood through neighborhoods, through long-range planning, health, safety, and environmental regulations to encourage thoughtful development throughout the city. The department has many accomplishments to be proud of over the past year, some of which I'll highlight for you. One is the establishment of an affordable housing subcommittee and the adoption of an inclusionary housing ordinance to show the community that the city council is serious about providing affordable housing for the community and making sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our residents. In addition to that, we have the completion of the Rancho South Campus specific plan, which provides a guidebook for a major area in the south portion of the city centered around creating a transit-oriented development near a new metro station. The design guidelines for single-family neighborhoods is another accomplishment that, I will note, the city received an award from the Los Angeles chapter of the American Planning Association, again, to show that the city is trying to maintain innovation, listening to its residents, and creating standards that are reflective of what the community is telling us that they're looking for. In addition to that, one of the items that we are most proud of is that we have been able to provide continued support to all of our residents and businesses that have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic throughout the year. To continue this, the department will continue to seek growth through progress. And the next fiscal year, we're looking to focus on several additional goals listed before you. Again, some of those that I will highlight is that we're intending to facilitate continued growth in downtown Downey, as well as all of the commercial corridors. We intend to initiate our electronic permitting service, develop a historical preservation program, again, reflecting needs and wants that we're hearing in the community. Initiatives that we're planning to focus on assisting the transient community. We're looking to partner with the community, with the county, on addressing those needs. We're looking at the completion of the Rancho South Campus Sports Complex. The city is currently looking to restore and plan out the adaptive reuse of the NASA Vault-Tee Building, again, recognizing its history and moving it toward a transitional future. We're looking at development of the Back 20 at the Promenade and looking for additional design guidelines for multifamily neighborhoods and implementation of our housing element programs moving forward. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available for any questions from the council.
Any questions?
I do. Thank you, Crystal. As always, great job. Under accomplishments, you have the restoration of the former NASA Vault-Tee Building. And then, of course, that's still part of the goals and objectives. What do you mean by accomplishments regarding that item?
Absolutely. Sure. By accomplishment is that the acquisition of that building has been a major priority for the city, and we're right at the tail end of getting all of that finalized, which is why we're very excited that it's also one of our future goals, is that we're completing the acquisition and we're ready to start planning for the future use.
Outstanding. Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember LaPlante has questions? Oh, Councilmember Trujillo has one.
Thank you. I was just wondering, what has been done to create relationships with shopping centers to create a parking system for apartment renters?
Sure. So there has been initial outreach that's been done to some of our commercial centers, the property management companies. One of the initial concerns that they have, again, is insurance and liability with regard to vehicles staying overnight and if there's any type of vandalism. So those were the initial concerns that were raised to us. We're looking into reaching out to other cities to see if any similar partnerships have been able to be reached and whether or not we would be able to maybe take some of those lessons learned or best practices and try to bring that back to our property owners.
I had the opportunity to attend our Public Works Commission meeting, and I raised the possibility of exploring what I call safe parking zones, if you will, primarily for our apartment renters, but can also be for homeowners. It would be permitted parking lots, one in each district, that we can tell our residents may be available on the days that they have street sweeping. So if we can, if we can look into that possibility of having a safe parking zone for renters, and again, it would be permitted that to demonstrate a need of why they need to park there on the day for their parking, I'm sorry, for their street sweeping. I would like to see if we could do one in each district. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next up, Councilmember LaPlante.
A few questions. One, and it doesn't show here, in the old American Legion property that's technically in Downey, and Southgate hates us for it. Where is that at? Is that a county project? Is that something that's?
Yeah, that's county-owned property. It's a county-initiated project. The city has been working in partnership with the county. Right now, they are in the development phase as far as putting their plans together. The city is in review of those plans, and we're working with them to try to get a tentative approval so that they can apply for different funding sources that they're required to apply for.
Okay, so it's basically a county program that we have to, you know, give the technical approvals for and, okay. And yes, I know it was a county-owned land because we were looking for school property once and found out that it wasn't owned by the American Legion. Tell me about the Vault-Tee Building. That is the little squiggly building, right?
Yes, on Lakewood, yes.
Yeah. Can somebody please tell me how in the world that's defined as historic? As opposed to why we can't just rip the sucker down?
It's part of what ties the city back to its history with NASA. That entire site, again, as most of us are familiar, was part of the NASA program. That administrative office building is one of the few remaining structures that was intact enough to be qualified as a historic resource according to the state's Secretary of the Interior. So because of that, because the structure itself symbolizes and is a throwback to what was previously the primary use on that property, it was given that designation. And once something is recognized by the Secretary of the Interior, it completely falls under all of those restrictions. And so we're not allowed to demolish or alter without falling in line with those requirements.
That actually is the only building that still remains of the whole site. Everything else was given the green light except for that.
I would suspect that if you talked to most of the residents of this community, they would find it humorous at best to call that historic. ISOR is what most people would call it.
Well, it is an ISOR. It is, it's, it is an ISOR now because it hasn't been used. We're actually in partnership with the school district right now, looking at doing an adaptive reuse that would actually make that actually a really cool, you know, industrial building office space. We're looking to use that as a facility for our STEM-related programming that we have and also to potentially use in partnership, again, with the school district to hold, you know, classes and things of that. Not necessarily your traditional classes, but sort of robotics and things of that nature. We're also looking at using it as an incubator. So there are a number of things that we can do with that site. There's a lot of square footage. The fact that we can get it for the great price of zero is pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do hope we are able, over the year, somewhat soon, as opposed to somewhere in the way distant future, are able to get something going in there, because right now, you drive by it and you just shake your head.
Right.
And just going forward, this certainly isn't going to happen immediately, because I don't think the county has a real plan yet for Los Pedrinos. But it's certainly not the facility you're going to be, you use the phrase, your transitional housing. I hope it's not the way it's structured right now, because it's not really very good for anybody's housing, since the doors lock and are, it wasn't jail, folks. But I think it's going to be very important that however that property is used or structured is very well-publicized to the District 2 and the people in that community. And frankly, we're going to need to have some real outreach to Southgate, because that property borders right up to a lot of homes in Southgate.
Yes.
And referring to the Los Pedrinos site?
Right.
Yeah, Los Pedrinos. Because if you go right to the back, it borders right up to houses in Southgate, who didn't mind it because they knew it was a locked-down juvenile facility. But if it was to become something else, it may have a significant impact on a lot of people and what they view it as. When everybody knew that people came in in police cars and left in, you know, police vehicles, they were pretty safe about it.
If I may, I always look at these as great opportunities.
Yeah, it is.
And so between Los Pedrinos and Rancho South Campus, they're probably two of the largest parcels of land that's available for development in LA County. How you proceed with that development is going to really determine what the future of those neighborhoods look like. And there's a huge potential and a great upside to do something that's creative, that's inclusive in terms of housing, retail, all of those things, that you could really, really have a dynamic neighborhood. So although they are ISORS right now, there's a huge, again, I keep using the word huge because it is a big deal, the fact that you have these large parcels of land that can be developed into something that is really dynamic and unique is going to be really something that I think the council and working with the staff has the potential to create a big impact in the community, so.
Yeah, I think just with Los Pedrinos, the biggest problem is the access in there. Because when it was just being used as a juvenile prison, you know, police cars came in, police cars went out. That was it. Not much traffic, you know, the daily staff going in and out. To make it into anything else is going to be, require a lot of creativity as to how you manage, how all of us manage the traffic flow. And that's why I'm talking, we're going to have to work with Southgate. And is there a way to get another access point into that area?
I think those are all good points. And I think that the opportunity is there for us to come up with some remedies to make something that is unique and can work for everybody.
Thank you. And thank you, Crystal. Great job.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. For the audience, I'm Leslie Murray. I'm the Chief of Police for the Downey Police Department. And today, I'd like to give you a brief overview of the Police Department and some of our accomplishments during the current fiscal year and our goals and objectives for the upcoming year. So the Police Department exists to provide public safety services to our community. And our goal is to provide those services as professionally as we can to keep Downey a safe place for our residents, our business.
safe place for our residents, our businesses, and anyone who comes to Downey to visit. You know, we do that by providing professional police services and by also making sure that we engage our community. We do that through our Neighborhood Watch programs and our Business Watch programs, as well as many other community events that we take, that we participate in. So for 2021-22, the Police Department hired 15 new employees, including eight police officers. We had our first National Night Out event. During the past two years, we pretty much shut down for any of our community relations in-person events, so we were excited to hold those again. We also resumed our homeless outreach efforts. We do homeless outreach and cleanups about twice a month. We resumed our Coffee with a Cop program, and we do those quarterly. And we got back to doing our Drug Take Back events, where we take prescription drugs off the hands of residents to increase safety in our communities. We do that twice a year in collaboration with the DEA. We also began a special needs awareness program. We're really proud of this program, and it's been copied by other agencies as well. It's basically a sticker program for anybody who has special needs, who resides in the community, they can come into the Police Department, get that sticker. We retain that information in our records management system. So when we go out on calls to a particular residence, it alerts police that someone at that house has special needs. They also can put that in their vehicles. So with the pandemic, we also saw an increase in street racing issues. And so with that, we developed a street racing detail. We have officers who go out on particularly high nights, incidents of street racing, to do directed enforcement, and we've been very successful in our efforts. This year, we were also awarded a $400,000 grant from Behavioral Health Services, and that's to work with the mental health issues, and we hope to increase our mental health services with the Department of Mental Health there. Recently, we also hosted our first youth academy class, which mirrors our Citizens Academy. It was very successful, and we look forward to doing that in the future as well. So for the upcoming year, our goals consist of continuing to maintain our community outreach through increasing our social media presence and through our participation and our presentation of National Night Out and Coffee with a Cop. We want to continue our partnership with the DEA for our Drug Take Back events. And again, with our social media, we want to actually increase our presence, and we actually are collaborating with a public relations firm to help us better craft our message and to provide us some assistance in developing a recruitment video to reach out to more members of our community to potentially be police officers with our Police Department. We're going to continue to conduct more outreach and cleanups with our homeless areas. And we're very excited about starting the Police Department's first drone program. The drone program is really important in terms of safety, both to the police officers and to our community. We look at it as an opportunity to decrease risk to our officers responding on critical calls. It also improves efficiency and reduces liability. We've actually had the opportunity to use a drone in a couple instances recently, and it was very successful. It allowed us to slow things down and to decrease the risk to our officers and to our community. They can also be used to search for missing children. They just have a variety of applications that will be useful to us. We're going to continue our citizen and youth academies this year, and we also look to develop a facility dog program. We're working with a nonprofit to bring a facility dog program to our Police Department. What that means, they actually donate the dog. It resides at the Police Department, but it's really meant for the community. They're very effective in helping to reduce stress in victims who have been victimized and to witnesses who have to testify in cases, and they've been very successful at other police departments. They've been used on the heels of tragic events, and they really are meant for the community, but it would reside at the Police Department and can be used at any of our community outreach events as well. I went one too far. The last thing we want to do is continue to provide and promote our school safety. You know, safety in the community is a big priority, but safety at our schools is of utmost priority to our residents. And we do that through many means. We have our School Resource Program, which we talked about earlier today. We also do monthly school safety meetings with the administrators of the Downey Unified School District, along with our detectives, where we continue to talk about safety issues and address issues. And then something else that I don't know if people know we have in place is we also have a emergency response program that we have collaborated with the district on. So it's a school site emergency plan. So in the event of an emergency at a school, we have an evacuation plan, we have a notification plan, we have all the site maps and contacts for all the school district employees there. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
I do.
Councilmember Vermette?
Yes. Thank you, Chief Murray, for your presentation. How often do you anticipate having the youth academies?
We'd like to do it at least once a year and possibly twice a year.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation.
Any other questions? Councilmember LaPlante?
A little thoughtful question. Why does it, why do we need motorcycle officers?
Because, and no, I haven't been pulled over, no, I don't have, it's just a, in a city this size, what's the benefit of having people on motorcycles versus putting them in police cars doing all of the work? And a different, a question that comes with it that I think is important is, what percentage of traffic ticket citation money does the city even get?
So the first part, I wish we had more police motor officers, because, well, number one, traffic is an issue in Downey. Street racing has become an important traffic, or a public safety issue. The motor officers have the ability to navigate through some of the heavy traffic that you'll see, especially during peak traffic hours. They're usually the quickest to get to a call, an emergency call, because they can navigate. So I love having the motor officers, whether it's traffic enforcement, which is an issue, or it's getting to an emergency call quickly, they have the ability to do so. And I can't tell you the percentage of money that we get from the traffic citations. Our primary goal when issuing traffic citations is to improve public safety in terms of traffic, and so it's really meant as a deterrent and to get people to comply with the rules of the road. Perhaps a Neil could share, I don't know.
Maybe you can just get back to us with that, because I think a lot of people think that your motor officers are out there nothing more than revenue raising.
Their primary function is to improve public safety in terms of traffic enforcement. That's to reduce traffic collisions by minimizing the number of primary collision factors, is what we call it, the reasons that, the laws that people violate that cause traffic accidents, whether it's speeding or illegal left turns. We want to reduce traffic collisions to improve public safety.
Or trying to get from Salford over to Susan at my house, where we had a traffic accident this morning that I got to call 911 and tell them about? I mean, the people got there quickly, did a great job. There are just places in this town that were never properly engineered. We get those people trying to get to school and boom.
Yeah, and the traffic at schools is a concern as well. It's one of the top complaints that we get is the school traffic, and so our motor officers are very effective there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vermette, do you have any other questions?
Well, just really quickly. Chief Murray, are we looking to add additional presence? I know with summer here and teenagers at a school, you know, we may be seeing more street racing activities or, you know, donuts around the parking areas. Are we looking to increase more?
Yeah, the summers always get a little busier for us. You've got more kids out in the streets, and, you know, we'll adjust accordingly, depending on what the trends are. If it does get busier, we can, you know, readdress and reallocate our resources to effectively deal with those issues, just like we do with the street racing. When it became a problem, we developed that team, got them additional training, and went out there and started dealing with that, and we'll do the same thing.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. For the youth academy class, I know we had our first one. Do we know when approximately what months we'll be having it? Because I think we had it in January. I can't remember the month that we, that it was held.
So it was in the first quarter of the year. We'll probably do one maybe in the third quarter of the year before the holidays.
I wonder if summer makes sense, or maybe it wouldn't make sense because kids are on vacation, going out of town, but.
Yeah, we're probably going to be more successful if we do it in conjunction with the school day, because we scheduled it from four to seven to be right after school. I think it might be tough to get kids here for 10 weeks in a row during the summer.
And then I had a question about the special needs awareness program. Have we had a lot of requests for the stickers?
We actually have. We've had a lot of people come into the police station and get those stickers, and then we've had a lot of phone calls from other police departments who've heard of it, you know, through word of mouth or our social media, and so I think it took off. And we actually stole it from Seal Beach. They were the ones who came up with it, but it's really taken off, I think, because we promote it in our social media as much as we did.
I really like that sticker program. And then, let's see. My last question has to do with the facility dog. Do we know approximately when we should be able to get that in place?
Hopefully sooner than later, but we are in communication with the nonprofit who we have to apply to, but it's definitely in the works, and we hope to get that in the near future.
Thank you. And great job, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question, Chief Murray.
Of course.
Have you thought about in the future having the police on bicycles?
So we actually have bicycles, and we do use them on occasion when we have a specific problem that we feel is best addressed on bicycle. I know that in the past, we'd use them in the downtown area when we were having some issues there, and they can be very effective. It's just a matter of having that need at a certain particular area, but we definitely have them, and we have officers who are trained to ride them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you again, and great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for having me here today to talk about the Fire Department and our accomplishments for this year and our goals for next year. And hopefully I can remember to skip through the slides this year, I forgot last year. All right, the Fire Department has several divisions, and we provide an all-risk emergency service, including preparedness, prevention, dispatch services, emergency response and mitigation, and we provide those services through efficient staffing, addressing equipment and facilities needs, and then by engaging public and public outreach. 21-22 was a very active year for us. I'm going to just go through some of the highlighted accomplishments that we've been able to do. We've been able to develop specifications for new apparatus, including a new command vehicle, two new ambulances, and a new truck company. And we've trained city staff on a public alerting system, mask care and shelter procedures in the event of a major emergency in town. Some of the facilities accomplishments we've done are moved into fire stations two and station four, and we moved out of the temp site and demobilized that. For staffing, we promoted one battalion chief, a couple of captains, two captains and three engineers, and hired five new firefighter recruits. Other accomplishments are, we're finishing up year three of a four-year plan to restock our emergency preparedness bins. We've implemented web-based technology for Fire Department training for our training calendar and for our policy manual, that way our members have access to our training and our policies anytime from home or at work, as long as they have access to the internet. We've developed and began to implement a new public education program with monthly themes that include fire safety, exit drills in the home, fire alarm safety, pool safety, kitchen and cooking safety, and several other themes that will be laid out as the year goes on. 22 and 23 are shaping up to be just as active as this year has been. Our biggest goal for the Fire Department this year will be fire service accreditation. That's an intensive program where community risk assessment is analyzed, standards of cover are analyzed, which is an internal look at our department and how we respond to calls, and then a strategic plan will be developed based on the community risk assessment and the standard of coverage assessment. Another goal would be to develop an ambulance operator recruitment and retention program. Part of that would be included in that would be reaching out to the local high schools to get students interested in EMT and emergency services, and then recruit those students as they graduate into the ambulance operator program, and then have that evolve into a farm system for recruiting firefighters and make it an easy transition from ambulance operator into the firefighter ranks. Another goal is to, since we've implemented training for city staff for mask care and shelter, we'd like to have an, conduct a citywide exercise with city staff to implement those skills. And then finally, our final goal is to, that I'm sharing today, is to finish our four-year plan for restocking our emergency preparedness bins. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Chief.
Do we have a repair, a finish on repair date for the, I think it's Fire Station Three?
No, Four.
Four.
Yeah, Fire Station Four. We, some of you may or may not know, but there was a fire after we moved in there. There's a process that we had to go through in order to implement bidding and go through the formal bid process. We finished up the fire investigation. That report has been submitted to finance. That will then go through the insurance company, and then we can move forward with the formal bid process to get construction underway. Initial estimates are, once construction starts, it'll take approximately two to three months from start to finish.
Okay, I did have a question. I know we've been seeing more about fires occurring here in the city. Is that, is that normal to be? Because I know we had a huge fire over at Rancho South Campus and a couple of small brush fires. Is that normal in our city, or is it something, are you seeing more of an increase of?
So this year, we have seen an increase in the fires at Rancho and some of the grass fires or fires along the riverbeds and railroad tracks, and I think some of that can be attributed to the homeless that are there to, sometimes they make warming fires, and sometimes they make cooking fires, and sometimes those get out of control and create problems for us. At the Rancho property, there have been instances of arson, where, again, homeless go in, and I don't know if they're thrill-seeking or what they're doing, but they'll start a grass fire and it'll get into the building, or they'll start a building fire. So to answer the question, there has been an uptick in those types of fires this year.
I was just curious, but thank you. Great presentation, and thank you also for your service.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the most exciting one. I feel like I always text you, call you, bug you every weekend, so I apologize for that.
No problem, Mayor. Anytime. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Public Works Department's accomplishments for this fiscal year and our goals for the upcoming fiscal year 22-23. Public Works is comprised of four divisions, namely administration, engineering, maintenance services, and utilities. Public Works is responsible for the operations and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, including the roadway network, traffic signals, streetlights, water lines, sewer lines, stormwater systems, parks, buildings and facilities, and fleet vehicles. For fiscal year 21-22, Public Works completed 23 projects with a total cost of $37 million. So some of the significant projects completed include residential streets, pavement rehabilitation. As all of you are aware, the city embarked on a very aggressive $30 million bond program to rehabilitate our residential streets. So the first phase repaved a total of 300 street segments consisting of of 36 miles of roadways. We reconstructed the pavement on Old River School Road. We installed water system improvements and repaved Third Street from Old River School Road to Paramount Boulevard. We completed miscellaneous concrete repairs and ADA improvements in Council District Three. We installed water system improvements and reconstructed the pavement on Florence Avenue. We constructed landscape medians and rehabilitated pavement on Telegraph Road from east to west city limits. As part of the city's Safe Routes to School program, we constructed sidewalks and ADA curb ramps adjacent to five schools in the south Downey area. Other projects completed include water system improvements on Fifth Street from Lakewood Boulevard to Downey Avenue. We completed sewer main rehabilitation at different locations in the city. We rehabilitated two of our groundwater wells, Thirty and Fourteen. We completed sidewalk repairs along Lakewood Boulevard from Firestone Boulevard to Alameda Street. And recently, Council adopted the Active Transportation Plan, or ATP, which will serve as a blueprint for pedestrian and bicycle improvements in the city. In addition, we completed design and either started construction, or will start construction in the next few weeks, the following projects. So the next phase of the $30 million bond program, we are in the process of repaving a total of 213 street segments consisting of 22 miles of roadways. We're well underway with a solar energy project at six of our facilities. We will soon repave Fifth Street from Lakewood Boulevard to Brookshire Avenue. We're widening the intersection at Firestone and Lakewood Boulevard to add dual left turn lanes on the northbound and southbound directions on Firestone Boulevard, and we're installing water system improvements on Pellet Street and Ryerson Avenue. Other accomplishments, I'm not gonna read all this. I just wanted to highlight, we're wrapping up the final design of PFAS treatment facilities for two of our groundwater wells, so wells Two and Four, and we recently obtained more than $12 million in Measure W grant funding for Furman Park stormwater capture and infiltration improvements. So that project is under design right now. The city has a very aggressive capital improvement program, or CIP, for the upcoming fiscal year. Our goal is to complete design and start construction of 16 projects with a total budget of $36 million. So these include the next phase of the residential streets pavement rehabilitation program. So the next phase will repave four more residential neighborhoods consisting of 535 street segments and 54 miles of roadways. We will widen three major intersections in the city, namely Paramount Boulevard at Imperial Highway, Lakewood Boulevard at Florence Avenue, and Lakewood Boulevard at Imperial Highway. We will install 10 miles of bike lanes and bike routes, as recommended in the city's bike master plan, and we will rehabilitate the alleys north and south of Stewart and Gray Road between Lakewood Boulevard and Patton Avenue. In addition, we're wrapping up the design, or we're working on the design of the space shuttle exhibit building, so we hope to initiate construction sometime in the summer of next year. We will start construction of the citywide fiber optic network, which will deliver reliable, inexpensive, high-speed internet service to all residents and businesses in the city. We're also installing water and stormwater improvements at various locations in the city. Other goals include repaving the parking lot at the city yard. We hope to plant 300 trees citywide as part of our urban forest management plan implementation. We'll clean 65 miles of sewer mains. We'll implement a SCADA system for our water sewer and stormwater systems. We'll rehabilitate sewer mains in the northwest quadrant of the city, and we'll start construction of PFAS treatment facilities for wells Two and Four. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions this time.
I've got a couple of questions. Thank you, Delfino. Thank you for all of this great work. Could you tell me once again, how many streets, residential streets were part of the pavement rehabilitation program? I know you mentioned it earlier in your presentation, and I didn't catch it.
So the city was divided into 10 grids. So initially, with a $30 million bond proceeds, we were hoping to do about six areas, because we have been getting a lot of really good competitive bids. I think we'll be able to do maybe seven or eight. So far, we have repaved 300 street segments, consisting of 36 miles. We're now under construction of another 213 segments, consisting of 22 miles. So by the end of the year, we'll probably be right around 58, 60 miles that we have repaved.
Okay. Let's see. And there was another one that I wanted to ask you. I'll come back to it. If not, I can talk to you offline. Thank you.
Councilmember LaPlante.
What is the citywide fiber optic system?
So the city entered into a development agreement with a private company, SciFi Networks, to install 415 miles of fiber optic lines in the city. So this will provide the infrastructure to provide reliable, inexpensive, high-speed internet to all the residents and businesses. So this was a project, this will be a project that will be no cost to the city.
What's the name of the company?
It's SciFi, S-I-F-I, Networks.
I do have another question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Alleys. Did we budget anything specific for, I know we're going to try to create a comprehensive alley restoration plan. Have we allocated anything specifically for the 22-23 budget that will apply to alleys?
So what we've budgeted in our alley rehabilitation program is $300,000 every year, and it is really for the reconstruction of the pavement, to install street lighting, and to do whatever we can within the public right of way. So anything in the private property would be separately done.
Got it.
I had a question. You mentioned rehabilitation of the street, Fifth Street, is it between Lakewood and Brookshire?
Yeah, so it's between Lakewood and Brookshire Avenue.
Would this affect Downey High School's ability to enter and exit from one of their parking lots? I know students exit onto Fifth Street. Would this impact them at all, or would this be, are we planning to do this, the rehabilitation during summer?
So right now, we're under construction, so we're hoping to get everything done during the summer. But normally, when we do, when we start construction, we do all the concrete improvements first, which means that there won't be any lane closures. And then when we do the pavement, they actually do one lane at a time, and they provide local access to driveways, even to the school. Normally, we don't really shut down the street itself, so they would be able to access it.
And then when we do rehabilitation on streets, do we notify residents that we are going to be working on their streets by putting any kind of door hangers, or anything, any information being put out to residents, so that way they're aware whether they're going to have access to their street or not?
Yeah, so we do different, we have different methods of notifying the residents. So we send out notices via letter, but within 300 feet from project limits. We also do social media posts through Facebook and Instagram. We do that, we run those like every few days. And then on projects where there may be some problems with access, we actually knock on doors and talk to residents to make sure they're aware of the work that's going on.
Okay. And then how about businesses, like major streets like Firestone, Imperial? Do we also try to work with the businesses, small businesses that may be impacted on those streets? I know we're gonna be doing some, the ones I'm concerned about, and I think I had mentioned it, and we can always talk, you know, later, is Lakewood and Imperial, some of the small businesses.
So same thing. We do send out notifications by mail. We also do social media posts, and because of some acquisition also from maybe the property that's involved, I think there's a construction, temporary construction easement. So we do work with them in getting an agreement and compensation. And then before we start construction, we actually talk to them and make sure that they're aware of everything that's going on. And as I mentioned earlier, we try to provide local access all the time, as much as we can. So the only time that they may not be able to access their driveways is when we're actually working right in front of the driveway or replacing their driveway approach. But otherwise, most of the time, it will be available to them.
And then, final question, it has to do with the water. We have our own water wells here in the city of Downey. How common is that? Are there other cities that have their own wells?
So most cities have their own wells. I think one thing unique about Downey is that we have 20 groundwater wells that is able to supply all of our residents. So 100% are being supplied by our groundwater wells, which means we don't have to purchase expensive imported water from Metropolitan Water District. So that's, those savings are being passed down to our residents, and we have good, reliable service.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for all the questions. Again, thank you very much, because I really do literally like bug you, I think, almost every weekend. So I appreciate everything that you do, and you're always very responsive, and great presentation. And to you and the department, thank you so much for working so tirelessly for our city. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council for your support. I will pass on the appreciation and kudos to my staff. They're the ones who are doing the heavy lifting.
I don't think we thank you enough.
Madam Mayor, that concludes the presentations from staff. I also, again, wanted to thank the mayor and Councilmember Prameta for being on the subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee, making sure that we're always watching the city's dollars and spending them prudently. And so thank you for your help in preparing this budget as well. But we've concluded our presentations. Is there anything else you would need from us? Staff is here. If there's not, then thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't know if my council colleagues have any additional comments. Seeing none, to all the department heads, thank you for the great presentations. Anil, thank you again for doing all the work and for keeping us entertained. Great job, as always. And we will now proceed on adjourning the meeting. The time is...
Oh, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. So what's next for the budget process? I know that the Arts and Culture Subcommittee wanted to make a specific request this year to be considered. So when do we do that? And I also wanted to talk about alleys.
Sure, there's a number of things. The next meeting would be the adoption of the budget. So if there is something that you want to include, there's always, look, the budget document is a living, breathing document. It always can be changed. You can always come back. Throughout the year, you make changes, and we make those changes, and we make those adjustments. So, for example, if you wanted to bring back something that had to do with more funding for alleys apart from the $300,000, then you can bring that back as a discussion for the council, and you can make that change. You're working through an art project, right, or an art, you can always bring that forward and make that adjustment, because we do that throughout the year. So what we've tried to do here is identify and work off the goals that you guys gave us back in February, and so we worked those into those budgets. But again, all of those things, I mean, if, you know, the next couple of weeks, right after the budget is adopted, you wanted to make a change, those are all things that you can do at any given time. It's not hard set, so.
Okay, so for the adoption of the budget, I think the committee wanted to request a line item of $500,000 to be part of the general budget, if you will, going forward. So I don't know if we want to look at like what other cities do. Some cities have art and culture, and I'm gonna add history line item. Some cities don't.
Yeah, we typically, what a lot of cities do, they have, when you say a line item, what they mean is that they're funding a specific program or project, right? And so what you typically want to do is you want to identify what program or project that you're funding to make sure that you're getting the bang for the buck that you want, right? And so if you want to be able to do that, you can do that. If you want to do it as part of this budget, then I would say then, then we need to stay here a little longer and figure out where we want to pull it from, because we got to pull it from somebody, somewhere to make it happen. Anil, typically what he does between the time this happens and adoption, he starts cleaning things up. And what happens is that between, basically, the budget adoption and September, he starts cleaning things up. And at that juncture, there may be additional revenues you bring back, and you'd say, look, you know what, there are areas that we can add some money to, and we can bring those back. It's a little bit cleaner process, but we're certainly open to however you guys want to do it. And I would just caution, just not having, throwing out a number without really knowing what you really are, want to buy. It's much easier to have the program that you want to buy, bring it back, and then go ahead and fund for it. That's pretty easy to do. There's nothing sort of magical on that. So I wouldn't worry about whether there's going to be funding for it. I think there will be funding for it. You just got to determine what you want to pay for.
Yes, because the process that we wanted to present to the council to adopt is, it would be an arts, culture, and history grant process that our stakeholder groups like Downey Art Coalition or the Historic Society can apply to. And then the council would have a process on how to select the grant recipients. Obviously, we're looking at, like you said, getting more bang for our buck. Like, is this something that's going to benefit the residents? How's it gonna benefit the residents? Is it gonna cost the residents, right? We're gonna make sure that there's direct correlation to resident services. And we met with Vanya to talk about how we can come up with that process.
Okay, so what you're talking about, okay. So what you want is create a grant program?
Correct.
Okay. So again, that's something, if the council still chooses, you know, between now and the budget adoption, we can look at, I'd have to get together with Anil and try to find, you know, where we can plug in that money, but we can do that as part of the adoption process between now and the adoption, to come up with a grant program or a grant line item, if you may.
Yes. And just to inform the council, in terms of the homework we were doing with Mr. Oskui, he requested and received proposals, because we wanted an idea, well, what do these groups want? What's the need here? And so the number that we came to, $500,000, was based on all the proposals that were submitted, and the groups were told, there is no commitment to anybody here, right? This is something that has to be brought in front of the council. And they've been made aware that we do not have a process. If this is adopted by the City Council, the grant program, we do not have a process yet. We still have to come up with it. How do other cities do it? And what are the requirements, right, in terms of why we should spend this money, taxpayer hard-earned money for arts and culture, right? What's the takeaway for the residents? So yeah, I don't know how to make the formal request, but I believe the Arts and Culture Committee wanted to request a $500,000 line item towards this grant program. But I wanted to make it very clear that the art, the stay gallery, would also be one of those. So at some point, we also got to talk about the stay gallery. Do we want to go, do we want to continue our commitment to them? I don't know when we vote on that.
I think, if I may, Gilbert, I think having a line item as far as a grant program is prudent. However, half a million dollars on things that we have no idea. I think this, Councilmember Trujillo, is something that this council, you know, really needs to have a presentation on and be part of an agenda item at our next council meeting or the following. Because, again, to your point, we need to be very vigilant of our funding. Just because we have a balanced budget, doesn't mean that we can fund... Just because we have a balanced budget doesn't mean that we can fund, you know, if they requested $500,000, it doesn't mean it's gonna be a done deal. To me, I am very, very cautious. This is our residents' money. And I think we can agree, we are, we all have a vast interest in support of arts, of culture, and history in our community. But I personally don't feel comfortable at this point in time to make any type of recommendation, except let's bring it back and fully have a report on that.
And I think, that's what Councilmember Trujillo wanted. I think he just wanted to have that conversation. I don't think he was requesting it for it to be done now. I think it was just more of a, he wanted to have that conversation, wanting to see what the process was, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Yes, thank you. So perhaps, and we should agendize it for the next meeting and ask staff to present. And I believe that the total amount that the groups, Vanya may have it, submitted was actually larger than $500,000. It's not my intent, right, to use that figure as sort of like the universe. We scaled it down, because these groups were told, if you get something, you know, it might be towards one of the things you want to do, because some groups have like few different ideas.
Right.
But I thought that we could start by allocating some money. Yes, we should arrive at how through a presentation by staff.
Yes.
So what we can do is we can also look at what other cities do, what their process is, you know, how they allocate it. There's usually some formalities that are set up in terms of, you know, how you qualify. Some will require some sweat equity, right? Meaning, we're not just gonna give it to you, but you have to, you know, match some dollar-for-dollar contribution to it. You know, I don't know, but I think that it makes sense for you to be able to have that information, and then determine, you know, how you want to proceed. So I wouldn't necessarily get sort of hung up on, okay, whether it's half million, whether it's $300,000, whatever that number is. I think that, you know, ultimately, I think what you have to come to a conclusion is, is how you set up the program, and what the parameters are. And then, you know, we can, you know, meeting with Anil, sort of come up in terms of what you all want to do in terms of the expenditure, like how much you want to commit to. But I think, you know, funding arts can be sort of a challenge, because everybody, you know, believe me, when there's free money for the arts, you'll get a huge amount of people to come out. So you want to make sure that you have a parameter in terms of, are, you know, are they only Downey residents, or Downey 501(c)(s)? You know, is there sweat equity involved in it? Is there a time limit by which you need to have been in operation somewhere? I mean, so these are all sort of things that you have to figure out. Or do you want to set aside some of the money for, you know, startups that have never done it? So all of these things need to be sort of determined in terms of how you want to do it. But I think we're a little early in that, and I think you want to be able to sort of set that up. And then, you know, again, this document isn't like concrete, right? So if you want to come back and you want to allocate some additional money for this, that's not an issue. Your biggest issue is gonna be what the program's gonna look like.
Yes. Okay, so for our next meeting, we could agendize that. I would like to have, for us to discuss whether we want to be the type of city that, you know, you invest in your values. If we value arts and culture and history, then our budget should be reflective of that. So I want the council to consider that. The next thing I want the council to consider when it comes to budget is increasing the alley allocation. $300,000 is simply just not acceptable for the conditions of some of these alleys. And I've walked a lot of them, and I invite my council colleagues to tour the alleys, particularly in South Downey. They look like Tijuana. That's just not acceptable of Downey. So we need to, again, it goes back to our values, the infrastructure, the curb appeal of our city, in my opinion, has been neglected over the last three decades. And the alleys are a perfect example. People are shocked when I'm showing pictures of these alleys. So I would like to increase the alley rehabilitation fund, if you will, to at least a million dollars.
Well, so I think we should talk about that now, then, because that is our, part of our budget right now. One of the things, we can, look, this is the council's priorities. Whatever, however you guys want to spend your dollars, we're gonna spend them however you direct us to spend them. So what I would say on alleys, and we've had this discussion, is that whatever I take away and put in an alley, I take away from a street that is used by everybody, right? Whereas an alley is used by a smaller number of people, right? So that's really the, and we can do that. We can do that today, and part of, as part of that, we can say, you want to take a million dollars? Then instead of, you know, 45 segments, miles of streets, then we cut it down to, you know, 39, whatever it is. So we can do, we can do whatever you want to do, and we'll make those adjustments. So however you guys want it, or do you want to take it from somewhere else? But we can certainly look at that and include that. So we can do that.
Councilmember LePatt?
Going back to arts for a second, whatever staff report we get, I'd like to know what we spend currently. Because I don't know. You know, and what, and put everything in that could possibly be considered arts, the theater, Stay Gallery, take your pick of events. And we can decide, you know, what's arts, what's culture, what's history? But without knowing what we're already doing, maybe there's things that we're doing that we need to stop. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at it, we need to look at it completely, and not just, oh, let's just add.
Absolutely.
Are there things we're doing that probably don't need to be done anymore?
Yes, like the Downey Link bus ride. That's always empty. When are we gonna talk about cutting that?
So we're actually doing that now. We've been doing that. And that is not funded by our general fund. That's specifically funded by Prop A, I think it is, that goes to transportation. So it can't be used for any other source.
Got it.
So you can't like say, I'm gonna cut the Downey Link and use it for arts.
But we could put art on the buses.
You could put art on the buses, that's right. So we're looking at that, because what we want to be able to do, to your point, is be able to limit that and be able to use some of that money potentially on alleys and streets, right? So that's where we want to be able to save some money there and put it in those categories. But we can't use it for arts.
I also, please, after you.
No, no, I think...
I also want to point out, Mr. Levas, I will not accept that. I'm going to have to cut in streets to give to alleys. We have a 30-something million dollar surplus. And at some point, we are choosing to provide less effective services, or services in general for our residents, because we want to save money in the rainy day fund. I get it. I get it. But, look, I made it clear, I'm the infrastructure guy. I'm the curb appeal guy.
I think we all are, Councilmember Trujillo.
That's fine. But for me, I have an obligation to advocate for the residents. And when I hear that our alleys haven't been given any attention for 30 years, it's disturbing. So I hope you will join me then in increasing alleys to a million dollars, since we're all infrastructure. Let's put our money where our mouth is.
I think we need to be thoughtful, and we can't just throw arbitrary numbers. If there's $300,000 allocated for alleys, then we need to go back to Delfino and find out how much of that money is taking care of how many alleys. We can't, we have to be thoughtful. And just because we have a rainy fund money account, it doesn't mean that we're going to touch it to improve the entire city. We could do that. But we wouldn't be responsible, in our positions, Councilmember Trujillo, to our residents. Our residents deserve good infrastructure, and they deserve arts and culture and public safety. But we have to be thoughtful about going, how we go about this. I would like to be able to increase that fund, but we have to, again, you know, with inflation, with other things, this is exactly the position that I'm afraid we could find ourselves in next year or the following year, thinking that we have surplus and immediately doing these extravagant allocations. We have to be very mindful of that. And I agree with you. We need to put our money where our mouth is, and I think we have, to the extent that over $36 million are going into street repairs and rehabilitation. But we need to be thoughtful and have a specific strategy for that. I would like to ask Delfino, before we arbitrarily triple the amount from 300 to a million, what is the cost of the 300,000? How many alleys is that taken care of? We also talk about public safety. You know, we said 180,000 get us a police officer. So we need to be thinking, what are we throwing the money? And we look at public safety, where we could also hire yet another police officer. So I think we want to do all these things that we promised our residents during our campaign, but we have to be very thoughtful how we go about it.
So the 300,000 that we budgeted for this year, it will be to rehabilitate the alleys north and south of Stewart and Gray Road, between Lakewood and Patton. So those would be two alleys. So we're thinking about 100, 150,000 per alley. So moving forward, every year, if we budget 300,000, it'll be doing two alleys every year.
So if we allocate 600,000, then it's four alleys?
About four alleys.
Okay.
And approximately, how many alleys would you guess that we had in the city of Downey?
I believe we have around 26 alleys.
26 alleys.
In the city.
Councilmember LePatt?
Well, since he knows there's 26 alleys, can we get a report that says, basically, where are our alleys, and what may be the needs? And what are the city's responsibilities towards the alleys? And what do we need to be telling the homeowners that's their responsibility? Because I know alleys are not like a street that goes from here to here where it's all ours. You know, there are pieces of the alley that are public responsibility, and people, parts of the alley that aren't.
And I want to reassure residents...
But I'd like to make sure we have a, you know, and I don't have a problem with saying a million dollars a year. I don't have a problem with saying, take it out of the, a one-time allocation out of the surplus. But I'd like to know what we already have, what we're planning on spending, and what the, are these things in such horrible condition? We could spend $5 million and get them all fixed. Is, are they serviceable, and we could have a plan? It doesn't sound like we have a plan for fixing the alleys.
Right.
Let me say this. You know, doing the budget is probably one of the more difficult things to do, because I look at each of these department heads, and when I meet with them, they all have requests, right? And they all think that their particular department needs something that they're not getting. So I will tell you that I met with the police chief, and we talked about more officers than, that's actually in the budget. She asked for more. And I, you know, so my thing is I'm balancing that, and then I'm looking at Jason and saying, you know what, we really need to look and improve the equipment at all our parks, because Measure S didn't cover everything, right? So I, you know, I look at the fire chief and says, hey, I need another, you know, administrative support person for, so I'm going through all this list and trying to sort of balance, at the end of the day, just enough in terms of what we can do, right? And these budgets just don't happen in a vacuum. There actually, there's a lot of work that goes on in terms of what the priorities are. And those priorities are based on the priorities that you all assigned to me, right? And so we can certainly, you know, do that in terms of the alleys, how you want. Let me say this on roads. We have spent more on roads in the last five years than the preceding 20, in terms of all the major streets that we've done. And one of the big lacking issues was the residential street. And, you know, credit goes to Councilmember Trujillo. He did ring, and he said, look, we need to do something more about streets. So we went out, and we bonded against the money to do it, because interest rates were at historical lows. So we ended up doing, you know, actually, it's more than 30 million, it's 45 million, because it's 30 million is of one shot, and $5 million for each of the three years that we're gonna add. So it's actually $45 million that we're adding to our streets that were not there before. So if we want to be able to do these alleys, I have no problem, to Mr. LePatt's point, I completely agree. I think that we need to sort of take a look at all the alleys, find out which are the most egregious of those alleys. Maybe it's the top five, maybe it's the top two, whatever it is. And then come up with a number, and then determine, okay, do you want to spend whatever that is? Is it a million? Is it 700? Is it 500,000? Whatever it is that we can do. And maybe some of those alleys are more important to doing than a segment of a street that you want to do. I don't know. But I have a really hard time pulling the money from any other departments that see kids every day, or that patrol our streets. Those are really difficult for me to pull. It's really, really, I mean, and I will tell you, looking at each of these department heads, one-on-one, when they're asking me for something, and I say, I'm sorry, it's gotta wait, because I'm gonna prioritize a ladder, that's 1.8 million dollars, because we need that in case of a fire. 1.8 million dollars is gonna get you a hell of a lot of alleys done. But, you know, my priority and your priority was to get public safety funded, and that's what we did. Now, if you want to do alleys, we can, we'll come back to you with a recommendation of the top, whatever it is, and then you guys can take a look at and say, you know, we want to fund it. Look, if you're spending $45 million, you want to spend $44 million on streets instead of 45, what's the big, you know, it's a million bucks.
I want to spend 45 on streets, I want an alley. I'm not going to give up streets. So if we have to pull from the rainy day fund, I mean, it's something for us to discuss. Let's just find out, what are the worst 10 alleys in the city? And maybe we should do a walking tour, so the council can see what we're talking about. Those alleys are just not reflective of the city, and they've gone untouched for 30 years, and that's enough. We need to fix the alleys.
So we will bring back to you the next council, you know, the, a report on the alleys, and you guys can give us all direction in terms of where you want to go, and how you want to fund it, and we'll be happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're throwing more work onto you, Delfino. So thank you. Okay, so we will now adjourn the meeting. If there's any other comments or questions, we're gonna adjourn the meeting. The time is now 4:45 PM.